Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings you give us, Lord. We thank you for your Son, Lord, who gave his life for us. We just ask you, Lord, to be a leader for our nation, Father. Make the right decisions for us, Lord. We just ask you to be with our children, Father, they get through this flood season, Lord. We ask you to bear with us as we're in the council, Father, that we always make the right decisions for our town. Forgive us for our failures, Lord, in Christ's name. Amen.
Stop with the reunion committee from the previous meeting, uh, council meeting. Members present, water mayor, Tommy Rowland, Ashley Chris Gillis, James Preston, James Logan, Keith Hethely. The mayor called a call and present called the meeting to order. Melinda Weaver presented the town with a check from Alabama Power for the beautification of the park. Minutes from the last meeting were read, James Preston approved them as read. Keith Hethely second. James Logan made a motion to pay the deals as listed on each account. James Preston second, all yes. Chris Gillen made a motion to purchase tires for the Tahoe totaling around $640 for the sap. James Preston second, all yes. Chris Gillen made a motion for Chief Franks to go to conference February the 17th through the 20th in Montgomery. James Preston second, all yes. Cleanup at the campground will start Monday, February the 3rd, 2020. James Logan made a motion in immediate consideration to purchase a mini X fund Tennessee River rentals. James Preston's second motion, all yes. James Preston made a motion to purchase a mini X fund Tennessee River rentals. Keith Hethely second, all yes. James Preston made a motion to go into immediate consideration. What did my daughter say? And immediate consideration to post a ad to hire for the water department to replace Crimson. James Logan second, all yes, except Chris Gillen, no. James Logan made a motion to post an ad to hire for the water department to replace Crimson. James Preston second, all yes, except Chris Gillen, no. James Preston made a motion to go into executive session. James Logan second, all yes. Road hall to go into executive session. Keith Hethely, yes. James Logan, yes. James Preston, yes. Chris Gillen, yes. Timmy Bachelor, yes. Chris Gillen made a motion to come out of executive session. Keith Hethely second, all yes. Come out a road hall to come out. Keith Hethely, yes. James Logan, yes. James Preston, yes. Chris Gillen, yes. Timmy Bachelor, yes. Reason for executive session was to discuss parking rent. Chris Gillen made a motion to cancel the next council meeting due to a holiday. James Logan second, all yes. James Logan. James Preston made a motion to adjourn. James Logan second, all yes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes, please, Randy.
Before we do, I'd like to, like, say something about, uh, I visited Tyson, we talked one day about this. Um, I mean, the vote's already been done about it, but concerning replacing Crimson, and I may have been told, told, Jamie, I've had a little misunderstanding about that. Because I thought, for some reason, we'd posted earlier, and I thought I didn't, I didn't catch, apparently, the news that Crimson had left us, that, you know, we were replacing. So, even though I voted no, I wish I hadn't. I regret doing that, so, I wish I voted yes. It was my mistake. I apologize. So, I'll second his motion.
All in favor?
Next on the agenda will be, um, the account balances. We'll start with the Bear Creek Garbage Works checking account. Available funds is $3,939.85. The Town of Bear Creek General Funds Checking Account, available balance is $71,627.05. That is not including the $70,000 that has been set aside for the garbage truck that is available, actually available, $71,627.05. The Town of Bear Creek Police and Fire Fund is, available funds is $12,072.38. Town of Bear Creek Twin Forks Campground Checking Account, available funds is $1,264.04. Bear Creek Fire Department Three Mill Tax Account, available funds $59,912.42. Town of Bear Creek Municipal Court Funds Available, $14,799.71. Street and Road Repair Account, available funds $1,586.04. Fire Department Tax Account, available funds $6,077.39. Town of Bear Creek Savings Account, available funds $3,263.05. Bear Creek Park and Rec, uh, available funds $5,381.50. Street and Repair Checking Account, available funds $8,164.97. Municipal Share Account, available funds $2,737.96. Town of Bear Creek Rimmel Account, available funds $14,525.30. Bear Creek Fire Department, available funds $16,782.96. And now, we will move on to the bills that are to be paid. The town bills. Okay, I'm getting confused. Okay, uh, the total that's due for the town is $22,621.66. The Water Department, uh, what's due for the Water Department at this time is $6,545.09. And that's it. Keep in mind, it has everything listed out, each one.
That insurance, all the people who pay insurance, isn't it?
Yeah. The total on the entrance is, uh, three eighties, $3,866.30, but each department, this part
I'll make a motion to pay the bills. Second.
All in favor?
Okay. Next on the agenda, uh, we will address the Water Department, the police, and Tyson, I'm going to let you address that. I know that we do have a couple, I know one for sure that has contacted me that's interested, but I know you wanted to address the council about that.
What I want to talk about tonight is trying to change how we do hires. I don't like the fact that we had this delay in trying to get somebody in, been running extremely shorthanded this past month. What I'm asking for y'all tonight, and hear me out on this, and please hear me on this, I would like to set a base pay by hiring somebody in, out, to start in the Water Department. So if we do have an open vacancy, instead of having to wait for a council meeting to come in and do all through the process to figure out what we're going to pay them, have a base pay that we can advertise a job's going to be at. Makes it a lot easier when we take an application and stuff like that. Uh, you know, with me and one other guy right now trying to get in the office, trying to do the lease and stuff like that, it hurt this month, big time. Big time, big time hurt. And, and, and I can't really convey exactly how bad it was, because we're going to see the exact fallout time when time comes, but I'd like to address it that way, so at least we know if there is an unexpected vacancy that crops up, that we do have a dollar figure we can put to it, advertise for X amount of time, and go ahead and bring somebody in. That way, we don't have this crop up. I don't expect to have a ton of turnover going forward, but if it does, I'd like to be more prepared going forward, because this has not been very easy. Personalized, trying to have, you've got one guy who's on call pretty much all the time, trying to let him have some kind of personal life, and he can't have it, because we just can't be going long enough to do what we gotta do. So, that's what I'm asking for y'all tonight, if we can entertain that, and try and get a number put with that, especially to then, if I'm taking an application, somebody has a question. Right now, the past four hires we've done for the Water Department all have different dollar figures attached to them. And so the lease this way, we're going to streamline it, minimize it, and be able to go forward with what we have to do. So, that's what I got for y'all tonight. On the other side of it, what we're looking at is, even through this month, we've been able to still chip away at that past due amount. Totally right now, outstanding is like $7,000, which is down from about $25,000 about seven months ago. So, we're still chipping away at that. Water losses up this month, like I said, we just don't have enough bodies to throw at everything we're trying to do right now.
I'm worried because it does make it difficult when they come in and we sit down to discuss hiring someone.
I hope we start it, if the lady says it needs to be something, say that he knows.
Yeah, I mean, a base, a base pay, because each one, as he checked back, each one started out as something different. No one started out at the, there's not a base, baseline pay for anyone.
What message do you have in mind, Tyson? Does your base start?
If you're basing it off of, we've paid previous employees, I think $12 an hour is a good start, and it's incentivized to get more based off of certifications and whatnot that they would have paying time served being here. Um, you know, I feel like that's a fair number, competitive number, to keep somebody here and get, get a quality employee.
He is our supervisor, should probably be able to set that.
Good to say, I mean, you got a great help from, Father.
He? We didn't make consideration.
Or do we need to state a motion on it? Say that passes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the idea Tyson had, and let him come up with what he thinks, whatever your reason for the start and sound, if they have experience or whatever, that'd be entirely up to you, the way I see it.
Can we do that? Or do we need to set a baseline? We have to, we have to vote on a baseline amount, so we can go ahead and...
Okay.
He said, what, $12 an hour?
Yeah, I mean, because if they come with certification, we can bump that up based off of experience certification, whatever, but having a baseline for somebody's experience.
Well, let's go, can we go ahead and do this, too, with it? Just, we're going to do the, I mean, I agree with $12 an hour, but I have a probationary period, and let's switch it to probationary period, too, before you could bump their rate, bump their pay up.
So, that would, so, that would start out at $12 and then like...
Six months?
Yeah.
Yeah, give it a, do it six months, and then go from there.
That sounds like a better motion. I'll second his.
All in favor?
And if two spots open, is that a great? We just won.
Well, yeah, there's one K's gone, and Crimson's gone, but... Yeah, we had them advertising since K left, but we never, we never did that. All right, so, uh, next on the agenda will be the update on the garbage truck. Andrew, can I do discuss that?
I talked to, uh, I went and looked at a couple of them, and looked at some new ones that are way out of our price range, but, um, I went and looked at one, two at Jasper and, and the calm comes, they're, they just wasn't up to par, and they wasn't even re-gent so I could drive them. I got them to test drive both of them, and then when he come out of, out of limp mode, I thought, they don't need no headache, you know? So, scratched out, I did, and I went to most shows, called Florence, and they were honest with me and said that when they, their garbage trucks, when they run them, they're pretty much, they're done, when they get done with them. So, I went to most shows, and they got some, uh, recently got some one-arm, one-arm bandit trucks, and they had one that was a really nice truck they had for their spare, and they got another one, they moved down. This truck only had like 6,500 miles on it, didn't have a whole lot of, you know, miles ain't much on garbage, just more hours, but it wouldn't really heat up a lot on hours, but it was a really nice truck, and, uh, and it was going to be on gov deals, but saying that we're another government municipality, we don't have to, they could sell it to us and not have to go through bid laws and everything like that, so...
You gotta go through the bid law. I think it was the point today.
Because goods and services, that's...
This is not through the service.
Totally different.
All right, well, that and there's 25, but I can try to find more, but, uh, equivalent to used trucks, I mean.
Well, that's, I mean, if they're the lowest, I mean, you'll still have to get...
He's still buying.
I mean, we just gotta get two more that's comparable to that, but we still have to go through the bid law.
You just have to say that.
Yeah, we just have to, Tyson, you can help him, if you don't mind, do it.
All right, on that, most shows got that, but, um...
And I know that's kind of disheartening, but it's not saying that you can't, we just, there's just a process, and, you know, Jasper's, I mean, you just find something that's comparable to this one, and let those people, let's give you the price, and then you'll go with the one, you know, the, the best price. All right, uh, next on the agenda is the Twin Forks Campground and temporary closing and cleanup, and, uh, today is actually the first day that, well...
We had a good day. We started at 7:00 this morning. Uh, had actually good, really good weather. We burnt, I'd probably say, I'd say three quarters of the campground today. We blowed probably over three quarters of every site got blown today. So, we're already on, almost at, we're at the back of the bath house, bath house at the B section back there, so then we like that, and then, uh, the far end, which we used to call C, is where we're always likely after blowing. Um, Jimmy come today and worked a couple hours with us, and we had a really good day, so the rain hold off, be great, but, you know, we got three days coming up of five, six, and...
And it's going to turn off code.
Yeah, so, we had a really good day today.
Okay, and while we're, uh, the temporary closing and the cleanup, during the cleanup process, I do think that, and I discussed this with Shani Cullen today, you can tell me what you saw, to get with an electrician, get a price just for them, whether it be Chester or whoever, to come in and just, and he's familiar with it, and see what it would cost, just for him to look and make sure that there's nothing as far that looks, uh, I mean, not, I don't think there's going to be any need for rewiring, but...
Make sure that that's our place.
Right.
No...
Just check everything.
And you still...
Just do a walk through.
Well, that would be a good idea, because we do have some electrical problems at the ball field, the longer session, the back of session stand has a, um, a, something is a short end or breaker issue, and we got two, uh, I checked them the other day when I talked to Reba, and she, I assume you mentioned ball fields, the back ball field has a light that shorted out. When you cut the breaker on, there's fire shooting one of them, the back part of the back, so we gotta look, see when we bring it in the pass, come out and change that light. There's several on the, we probably do, one of them's like seven on the public, you know, compared to others, so, we may, but we don't have nothing to reach.
Show us.
We'll just have to make sure.
Show the electric, yeah.
Show the electric.
I saw we're using fast, there's an old one around here, have a bike truck that get up there. But, I mean, if somebody knows somebody else, they call, it's great.
But it just have to ask for a person, which is going to cost.
Yeah, we'll have to make sure that it doesn't go over.
Yeah, if it goes over sharp limit, it starts the protectors, like they do.
So, we can, we'll make some adjustments, and just go like that.
Just come over tomorrow and figure out what we have to do with all people, because you'll have to tell them what all has to be done.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, if, I mean, I've got any chance, we are, yes, we're with it.
Show, they're talking about on the ball field, show is the one who did the ball field.
Which still be Chester, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that it's going to cost much of anything, but...
There's an avenue, we can go through the...
It's just inspection.
It would just be inspection, as long as, yes.
We'll get prices on all.
But we need to get an estimate, I want an inspection with us, because I can only approve, if it goes over $1,500, the inspection, then...
They should come here.
Yeah, we'd have to bring it to the council, and they'd have to go...
I've got a long time to do, one football field, we'll get...
And, and...
We don't have problems, we don't got problems with ball field.
Yeah, big problems.
There's one box on the campground that's, the wood that it's attached to has broke off over in, um, what I call Letterman Harley Road, and then the bath house one, that light flickers on and off. If you're in there showering, it scared me to death to think if somebody turned the light on, I mean, for bath house two, that light stays on all the time outside, so I'd like for that light to be checked on, too.
Just get, make your list, and then we'll have to check all of that, but, like I said, as long, we'll have to give you, have, then we give us an estimate, so if it exceeds what I can, uh, what my, what I'm able to prove, then we'll have to bring it to y'all.
Now, I mean, there's not a big job, but...
Yeah, if it's going to be a big job, then, uh, it's going to go past, I mean, involve the bid law, then we'll have to go through that whole process. But it shouldn't be, because, I mean, there's nothing major that's going, gone, gone wrong, but, uh, anyway, so, we, we will go to work on that, and then we'll update y'all on that. Okay, uh, the dates for the drawing, tentative dates for drawing, and tentative dates for opening, and I'm, I'm, and I say tentative, because it's going to be really up to how it goes. I didn't know, yeah, I didn't know if we wanted to schedule, like, the drawing. We did it on a Thursday before, and I didn't know, I, I had put March the 5th, which is on a Thursday. I didn't know if that was too soon, if we'd rather do the drawing on March the 12th.
When are you planning on opening?
Well, I mean, we're not going to get finished until February the 29th. I mean, that...
I just think if we go ahead and set a draw date, that's going to have a lot of people off a minute.
Right.
I mean, whether we're open for that date or not, we got that draw, those people know when we're opening, that they will get those...
I said, one way to open...
The next, yeah, and I, and what I had was the opening date, tentatively would have been, uh, the 12th. Yeah, draw on the 5th and open on the 12th.
Draw on March...
March the 5th and open, uh, reopen on March the 12th. If that's, if, good for the council.
I mean, I can, since they're all here, if I was...
We can, we can do the draw on field, and if, if the campsite's not ready to open until like 23, 24 seconds, that'd be okay.
Yeah, we don't want to get caught by them and say we're going to be open on this day.
So, just...
I see.
Drawing. So, for sure, the drawing on March the 5th, then.
At what time?
What time we did before, 9:00?
I think it was 9:00.
All right, this is another thing.
You're going to do six? Let's do six, that way everybody will be on board and convenient.
You'll know by March 5th what your open date is.
Right, right.
All right, this is another thing, when we had the draw last time, we let the campground open just for them to go through and see what number they like. Can we keep, leave it open like two hours, maybe, open it at 3:00, and leave it open just for them to go through and pick their spots?
I think that's, I think...
So, we did last year?
And then also, uh, I have down on here the current rates. Do you, I wanted to make sure that we were still, y'all were okay with the rates that we ended with, ended the season with, or if, you know, if you wanted, if y'all wanted to make changes.
I think, I mean, I mean, just my opinion, I felt we need to try to keep it, I would like to, right now, to get it open, or just get careful versus what's trying to...
I, I mean, I have a lot of those people.
I say some money is better than no money.
We're staying with the base, do you think? We don't talk, do you have options, like, um...
We, we are.
Okay.
Where we, when we voted and we lowered the rates, we were still, I mean, we were still competitive with our rates.
I think it all started out, or left off last year's, last year we didn't have this ton of votes, I don't think it was one of them.
She's had a lot more interest, really, hadn't it?
There's been a lot of people that left, you know, mad the last time they're calling, they won't come back.
That's good.
And, um, I'm, like, I've had some people call from Tennessee that usually camped up at Joe Wheeler. Joe Wheeler's down for a year, they're not going to be opening in Joe Wheeler, and they won't come camp with us. We already got a Boy Scout troop, and another one from Auburn that's coming up again, so, um, you know, just the Boy Scout, they're not, some of them are not being called Boy Scouts anymore, but, you know, we just got a lot of interest in that kind of thing, and word of mouth, and I'm going to try to go meet with, uh, the, uh, Dismals, because a lot of people that stay with us from Birmingham, maybe if it's just for the weekend, they're going to Dismals, and I need to get a working relationship with them, and also know more about our canoe run, because that's a lot of people that we get through the summer goes down our canoe run to, right here in Bear Creek, so, um, but we've had a lot, a lot of people calling, and most of them are those that left and, or won't come back, so, and a lot of them are won't, that goes for 11 months, 11-month campers.
Right.
So, if we can just hold those prices in there, or do something to keep them going, I think the price we are right now, I called Bonnie today at B CBA and talked to her, and, um, she, we're comparable with them, and also, uh, where we was having to do that 180-day on state tax, it's been dropped to 90 days, so, uh, we don't have to do state tax anymore after 90 days, instead of 180 days, so, that's another thing that's going to help them.
Right.
Another thing that's going to help them, just stay with us.
So, do we need to make a motion to...
Just for the draw, because that's all that I said.
I'll make a motion to have a draw on March 5th, 6:00 P.M.
All in favor?
The next council meeting will be, um, February the 17th, and that's President's Day, and I know that probably school will be out, and town will, uh, will acknowledge that holiday, but I, I had down here whether y'all wanted to just cancel and just have one meeting, but due to the election, we've got to have...
We got some stuff we need to have done by February 25th.
So, we're going to need to, uh, make sure that we reschedule that meeting.
Can we do it on the 18th? Would you be Tuesday?
Or Thursday?
Or, yeah, or the 20th?
I remember that's something, yeah, I mean...
I'm good, anyway.
Or the next week, I mean, there's still another one, no, no, no.
No, because the city...
You said that had to be done by the 25th.
Yeah.
So, it is the 18th or the 20th, and she said 20 was better for the ladies.
Uh, if that's going to be cutting it close.
What would we say? Change the people, Thursday the week before.
Next week, you just come back next week to do it?
Well, I mean, yeah.
You have much time?
We can do it the 13th, if y'all want to move. And then 13th.
I'm good.
And that way we're in plenty of, we're not running, like, closing time.
Yeah, we're not cutting time.
Some stuff we got to take care of, we'll name, I got your options.
That gives us, yeah, that gives us 12 days to get it done, and then, well...
Do you agree with 13?
Without changing the...
Thursday, maybe, depends, maybe it hangs one.
Well, I mean, if, even if he's gone, we still got one to, or does all...
We should have a board.
Also have a board.
I don't know if we schedule for, for the that year, anyway, the regional, anyway.
Remember you do on 11?
Well, I think that's fine, the, that next Thursday, what is that day?
The 13th.
13. I mean, go ahead and set it then, like you said, I'll, I'll do my best to be here, if I can, y'all still have a lot with the rest of you over here, it's fine. I will definitely do my best to be.
6:00 good, with everybody?
So, it's going to be on, uh, what'd you say, 13?
13.
So, I have to have it at the 8:00, because this is running the 13th, because there's a way to do on the 14th, so I have to have it down at the place that want my help, but we just will be over in the 13th.
Need that motion, I guess. Like most of our, to the next council meeting, 13th this month, after 6:00.
Set the same thing.
Set the 17th at 6:00.
Next on the agenda, Jason's wish.
I have a... I got four and a half.
Come difference, and I have to talk to y'all once again about Freedom Fest, uh, set for June 27th, that the city's on board with it again this year.
27th, that the city's on board with it again this year.
You said June 27th?
Yes, ma'am. It'll be the week before the 4th. Guess we should ask the police that they're up for it again this year.
Y'all did it now, I heard.
Yeah, and that'd be great.
I keep trying to write you on Freedom Fiber, you're like, no, Freedom Fest.
Do y'all have porta potties out there too, besides the bathroom, y'all do have porta potties, okay? I couldn't remember from last year.
We didn't vote on them last year.
I think we waved a few, whatever they...
Yeah, we didn't charge them anything, and they had access to it all.
Well, they're behind Jason and his organization, sure, they do a great job, they go in there, do everything, clean up, our employees never had to go back behind them, pick up nothing, everything they do that they land.
It was a little less than last year, but it was not our fault.
I started saying, oh, yeah.
It was again, June 27th.
Yes, okay.
Well, that would happen after we left, maybe I said...
Yes, it did, thank you.
I make a motion that we allow them to use the, the park from June 27th this year.
22nd.
22nd.
22nd, sorry, 27th?
27.
G27, that's what I thought I said, I said G27.
The 24th.
Second.
All in favor?
And we're not gonna touch any of that.
Yeah, yeah, and they have access to everything.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, what did you do, Jason?
I'm on lunch.
All right, next will be the fire department.
So, 2000, the first one is time to get our fire tanks and cascade system, updated, checked, certified, we have to do that every year, and NACCO come down, do that for us, our cascade system, what we use, refill air bottles, those fire tanks, what we use, uh, hey, corded up, NACCO, they have to be certified every year, and NACCO, just before we bought all this stuff, they're familiar with it. Fire packs, generally, those either $50 or $100 a piece, and then the cascade system, I can't remember what it was last time, they go through a check and change out all the filters in it and everything, there's compressed air, but it's also filters and everything, so, but we need to, need to get that, to have that setup to get done, and the second thing, a lot more expensive, but, on a brush truck, we're in need of a skid unit, and what that is, is a new tank, new pump, new center rail, and it's all built in one unit, and it attaches to the truck, so if the truck, you know, goes down or whatever, we can pull this unit off and put it on another truck, so we know it's not just dedicated, to be dedicated to that truck, at some point in time, if we wanna upgrade a truck, we can use a saved skid unit, you know, what the tank, we got on it now, it's 400 gallons, and that's what the skid unit's got on, our pump, it's working, but it's got a lot of age to it, so we replaced the pump on our tanker, and we're actually used it today, since we got it back in service, and it done a great job, done a real good job, but, but this pump is about the same age as that other one, and like I said, it is working, but what we got on the truck is what we put together, we build it, you know, so it's not, you know, we built out what we had, what we find, and this skid unit would be, you know, store built, it'd have Honda engine, you know, good pump, good center rail, good tank, good everything, you know, instead of a put together thing that we got, which what we got's worth, but, what I'd like to do is take, a skid unit would be $13,144 as quote from NACCO. I asked for another quote from Tuscaloosa Fire Dealer, I've been trying to get quotes from them for three months, they hadn't ever gave me one, that's the only two fire dealers they are in this area, you know, and that, what I understand, that is below bid loss, we should be good on that, bid loss 15,000.
Should, but, I mean, if there be a way to get some other bids, see if there's a more viable alternative bid.
Yeah, I mean, we can take quotes, but, you know, then you're gonna be reaching, reaching out to Nashville, Montgomery, I mean, you know...
I just check with Tuscaloosa, the one other one.
But, but, well, I mean, I don't just disagree with, we've called them four times.
They don't respond.
I begged them another...
They don't respond, they don't respond.
And the other, they used to be some dealers in Memphis, I'm not aware of any there anymore, you know, without going outstate, you know, I mean, NACCO's, you know, what I understand, that is below bid loss, and that 13,000, I'd like to take it out of part of our general fund, so that's, we got 16,000, I think, in it, 'cause that's money people's gave us to upgrade, buy equipment with, that's why they gave us that money, so I'd like to use that out of there, and then, cost, well, have the fire packs, the cascade service, and I'd like to come out, three mill tanks, four of the bike packs, they can do it either way, you know, but I'd like the skid unit to come out of the general fund, I said that's what people still made some money to all these years, and we let it sit there and build up, so, we'll buy something that'll help us a lot, with grass fires, and not only that, I mean, if you have equipment for fires off-road, tractor, bulldozer, whatever, you know, off-road, we can get to it better with this truck, and that's why we're elevating the 400 gallon tank, you know, with it, if you had to go off-road and other trucks can't much, it's big enough to help, help the day. But we got the money paid for it, and I said this there, it'd be a real good upgrade for the farm.
Well, I support that, and him go ahead and go in with NACCO, since there's, you know, it's just they're close, so we can go ahead and get it done.
I could make a motion for many consideration, to go put in NACCO.
And we're doing also, we're doing the recertification.
Recertification.
Recertification of the tanks and the cascade, and then the, also, the skid. Now, the recertification, all that, is that coming out of the different point?
Didn't come out three mill or from, the bike tanks, people.
Which one is it, did it come out of, what's going through the...
Probably the, because it's got more, it gets a lot more off of the year than with the tobacco account.
All right, okay, the, the tech data, so that will come out of that, and then the other will come out of what...
Kind of like the donation, the, in our donation. I'll need a second to get some of it considered.
One second.
All in favor?
I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna say I don't, if I'm ready.
You want to say?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and put the cascade system, what'd you say, three mill?
All in favor?
Say one for the brush truck?
Okay.
We did all one.
We did all one.
Yeah, we did all the one thing, we said which council we'd be with.
All right, the next, I'm gonna, it's not actually on the agenda, but I wanna mention it, there is a lady that's contacted Jamie several times that is interested in renting the water department, I know it's not on the agenda, we can't vote on it tonight, but when we meet on the 17th, it will be on the agenda, who y'all could be thinking about what we would be for rent, it's the old water company.
There'll be a shop in there, she's called back late night.
So, the doctor just, they think...
3:00 and 7:00, everyone.
And that'd be, you know, the utilities that would be less, with power bill and everything there, so...
We still have to keep power on, because we have to keep that big humidifier in there going, because if not, everything in there's already gone.
Yeah. So, yeah, if you would just write that down and just, you know, say we think it would be a fair amount for rent, and that way we can contact her and let her know, and after the meeting on the 17th.
Probably just, I think it's on inside here, if y'all, it would be up to her to fix the building, we have to clean it out, but you don't have to fix it, to her.
Call in the over the different parts, placing her in.
Yeah, yeah, they would, yeah, that term.
A lot of different aspects you would want to have.
You're gonna have to decide that, it's after next month. She just wanted to know if y'all would consider...
I'll sure, I said it yourself, yeah, make it, I'm told.
She probably just come to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Well, if she did, if she's interested in it, she probably just, because they discuss, she probably...
Yeah, she felt like to get on the agenda.
Yeah, but she's calling...
Yeah, just tell her to get on the agenda, we're aware, okay, now, we need to discuss the, no, oh, at the next meeting?
Yeah, I'm gonna get all that, I'll give it to you, just three things that's gotta be discussed, the decisions that gotta be made.
Okay.
And most of it, I think, probably James and Chris are familiar with them, they're starting to think you have to do for all of elections.
Set the tape for the next people on the ordinance to have reelection.
All right, well, I guess that, I guess that does it.
Make a motion to Jerry.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/49CountyNewsTV.